Call the meeting of the planning commission to order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clemens.
Here.
Mr. Sirianni.
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
And Mr. Flanagan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes, February 29th, March 28th, June 18th, and June 27th. Is our motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Election of officers parliamentarian. How do we proceed?
I move that we appoint Mr. Sirianni as planning commission parliamentarian.
I second. Do you accept the motion? Do you accept?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That was my first job on this board. I know, because he was...
When it comes around again.
Circle.
I know.
Okay, comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any matter not scheduled for a public hearing. Unfinished business.
No, sir, no unfinished business at this time.
New business. Public hearings allow the commission to gather information from interested citizens on the agenda items. Citizens may speak in reference to each item on the agenda for a time usually limited to three minutes. Commissioners and staff may ask questions of anyone attending the hearing. Speakers are asked not to direct questions or comments to each other. Speakers are not allowed additional time for rebuttal. This is a hearing, not a debate. Questions may be directed to commissioners in community development during staff hours, staff during office hours. Public hearing conditional use permit, CUP 4814-2024.
Mr. Pankati will be presenting this case.
Good evening. I am Louis Pankati, town planner, and I'll be presenting the Amberwood Animal Hospital Comprehensive Sign Plan, CUP application. This request is for approval of a comprehensive sign plan for 121 and 123 Sycamore Street. The properties are both zoned C3, general commercial. Lot 11 is used as a veterinary office, known as Amberwood Animal Hospital, and Lot 12 is used as a dwelling and for parking for the office. According to Section 27-238F, a comprehensive sign plan can establish the time, manner, placement of signs, frequency of message changes, the materials, hours of lighting, the height of signs, the total number of square feet of a signed surface, and number of signs to be placed on a site. With an approved conditional use permit for a comprehensive sign plan, signage can be placed in accordance with the plan even if it would otherwise not conform to ordinance requirements. This plan shows three signs. The first is an existing directional sign that is located about four feet from the property line facing Sycamore Street. The setback requirement for freestanding signs in our ordinance is five feet. The plan will also allow the refacing of the sign, but the size will remain the same. The second sign is a banner sign located on the Animal Hospital building facing James Madison Highway. Banner signs are only allowed as temporary signs per the ordinance and do not require permits. However, a sign was approved in error for this sign as a permanent sign. The applicant has agreed to remove the sign following approval of the CUP and completed installation of the new monument sign per the GDP. The proposed monument sign will be placed on Lot 12. The Animal Hospital's previous monument sign was on this parcel, and it was destroyed. It was considered an off-site sign, as the actual veterinary office was not on the parcel, and therefore it was nonconforming. After it was damaged, it was removed more than two years ago and therefore cannot be replaced administratively. Approval of the CUP will allow them to place another monument sign on the same property that the old one was on. The new monument sign shown here is a 100-square-foot V-shaped sign. The maximum allowable square footage would be 180. This one is saying only to 100 square feet. It will be continuously internally illuminated with LED lights and the lighting will be in accordance with the zoning ordinance. All landscaping will have to comply with ordinance requirements. Where this sign deviates from the ordinance requirements other than location is the height. The height of the sign shown here is 12 feet, where the ordinance only allows eight feet. Next to that would be that existing banner sign that they have agreed to take down upon approval and installation of the new monument sign and the existing directional sign that is eight square feet. And here are some renderings provided by the applicant of what the monument sign may look like from James Madison Highway. This CUP is being presented with the following conditions. One, that the signs on the property must be in general conformance with the GDP, with the following amendments, that the existing monument sign will be removed, and that the landscaping around the monument sign will be in accordance with ordinance regulations. The height of the V-shaped monument sign shall not exceed 12 feet with the exception of the support structure, which may extend 10 inches above the signed face. That's, if you see here, those ornamental, or ornaments on the top of those poles would go above 10 feet, or 12 feet, but only up to 10 inches. The signs on the parcels subject to this CUP may only advertise business activity conducted on the subject parcels. The signs shown on the GDP with the exception of the banner sign may be refaced, provided the square footage and height of the sign do not increase.
Louis, sorry, could you go back one slide? You accidentally went one too far, I think.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And additional signage shown on the GDP is, or not shown on the GDP, is permitted provided it shall conform to town code requirements related to signage or is otherwise approved by town council as a subsequent amendment to an approved conditional use permit. The ordinance states that council may issue a conditional use permit provided that the use meets the following additional standards. The use will not adversely affect the health, safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. The applicant notes that the monument sign is a replacement of a sign that was destroyed and that the height is reasonable based on the existing signs within the immediate vicinity of the facility. That the sign will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood. The applicant states that the monument sign will adhere to town code requirements for illumination and is in general conformance with other signs in the immediate vicinity. The use will be in harmony with the goals, policies, and future land use map in the comprehensive plan. So the property is situated within an identified mixed-use business character area, which states that in relation to sites, the town should require all commercial signs to be monument style with materials coordinated with the primary structure. It continues to note that signage and lighting should be consistent with adopted signage and design standards, and that buildings are encouraged to be consistent with human scale as it relates to their size and scale. The sign is also located in a gateway and corridor character area, which are identified as creating a strong impression on the overall community. In this area, there is a guideline to remove billboards and off-premise signs over time. It is also identified that these corridors should be kept free of billboards and visual clutter. And the four standards does not apply, as this parcel is not within the watershed protection district. I would be happy to answer any questions you have for staff. The applicant's representative is also here and would like to address the board or the commission when appropriate.
Want to have any comments or questions?
I'll just point out that we discussed this at length at the last working session, so we're not making a snap decision here. Even if there's not much discussion at this meeting, we've been through this, for those watching, that we deliberated on this, in fact, at some length at the last working group meeting.
How do we move forward to the public hearing?
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to come and discuss this? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob Hudson. I live at 12350 Dearies Road in Culpeper County. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I thank the commission for the opportunity to appear before you, and I thank the commissioners and staff for their support in the work session, and I'd like to just briefly go over a few points. I wanted to introduce as well Mr. Rick Farnwell, who's with me. If he would stand up, be recognized. He's the engineer in this case. If there are any technical issues, he's prepared to try to answer those. I do want to go through a few things, as I was, did not give you these in the work session, but a lot of these questions were asked, but I will try to be brief. This story is about Dr. Harry Burchard, who came to Culpeper in 1980, and he bought the two lots that you see on your plans. There were two lots, and that was in 1980. But later that year, he applied to the town of Culpeper, and this is why the exhibit is attached to my justification letter. That plan that one of the commissioners asked about was a site plan that was requested and was approved. So in effect, while there are two lots, it is one site, and staff has also mentioned before that it's effectively operating as one site. Dr. Burchard, I would submit to you, has been a wonderful asset, as has his animal hospital, for going on 44 years, and I don't think that's in debate. I also would comment on a point, a good point, that Mr. Hopewell made, that the entrance to this site is on Sycamore, not on 1529 Business. So there's no access from there, but the visibility need is from 15 and 29 for obvious reasons in terms of traffic. And so I agree with Mr. Hopewell's point that, so we're trying to modernize the site a little bit, improve the visibility, and so with respect to the posture of this case, the procedural posture is, of course, a CUP sign application. Staff has told you on page three of your staff report, and I quote, "With an approved CUP for a comprehensive sign plan, signage can be placed in accordance with the plan even if it would otherwise not conform to ordinance regulations." So there are certain specifics with respect to landscaping, illumination, heights, et cetera, but you have the ability, it's your option, to approve a CUP sign permit. And frankly, that's a very helpful tool for both the applicants that may come before you as well as the town, because there may be circumstances or site-specific concerns that don't necessarily fit all the standards that may apply, and therefore the town has the ability to offer some flexibility and, while doing so, impose reasonable conditions. So that protects the town, and it also protects the public, where they can come in and ask for certain deviations. With respect to justification for approval of this plan, I would refer you to my letter of justification, and I won't rehash all those, but I just would like to summarize a few points as a matter of highlighting. Your complaint calls for supportive economic viability, and Dr. Burchard is contending that this sign will help enhance the economic viability of this site. In other words, it's a modernization of what has been there before. Let me also introduce, we have Dr. Mark Smith, who's just come in. Dr. Smith is a veterinarian with Amberwood. He's been with them for nine years. Dr. Burchard has been there now going on his 44th year. He is the founder of Amberwood. He was here at the work session. I don't know if he's going to be here tonight. He was invited, so hopefully he will. Your C3 zoning calls for supporting commercial business. Your Article 9 of the code calls for support for economic development, and specifically with respects to signs. However, there is a strong emphasis not to allow flashing, scrolling, or varying intensity of light. So this particular sign does not violate any of those limitations. So the test, as Louis has mentioned to you, the test is, you've seen the test, we believe that the tests have all been met. Certainly, there's no adverse effect to persons that might reside in a working area. There's no detriment to the property or improvements in the area. We submit there's no detriment to public. Welfare, and frankly, would argue that this sign enhances public welfare by announcing to the public that there is an animal hospital here that they may otherwise not know about. The application is consistent with the complaint. I laid out in detail the reasons I say that in the justification letter, and I won't go over that. The specs that Louis has mentioned, there are a number of setbacks, landscaping, illumination are all met. The size is met. The size is important in this case, because the allowed size of your sign, a sign, is 180 square feet, 180 square feet. This sign is 100 square feet, so almost half as large as what is allowed without any deviation. So really, what became in focus pretty early on with staff was that the only variant saw it is the height, and that is a true statement, that obviously 12-foot is requested. We know that the eight-foot is the limit by code, but we also know that eight, greater than eight feet, is allowed by CUP, and that's why we're here under a CUP application. The key factor for the height is, as Dr. Burchard told you at the work session, is the security fence. That fence has been there for many, many, many years. You can take a look at it and tell, it's an older metal fence, and chain link fence. It's there to provide security for dogs and cats, and there are many dogs and cats that come to the site, coming and going, and it would be inappropriate for those animals to be able to run loose and get out on 29 Business. That security fence is very, very important to this site. The height of that fence is approximately six feet tall. There are, in some cases, a height for the fence at 6.25 feet, but on average, I would say it's at six feet. So if you can imagine the fence at six feet and then visualize the face of the sign, five feet tall, you now have a height of six and a quarter plus five, which is 11 and a quarter feet, and that's why the 12-foot is being asked for. I would also reiterate what the staff said as to certain facts. Quote, "One, the applicant knows that the monument sign is a replacement of a sign that was destroyed, and that the height is reasonable based on the existing signs within the immediate vicinity of the facility. And number two, the monument sign will adhere to town requirements for illumination," and as the applicant states, "is in general conformance of other signs in the immediate vicinity." Real quickly, if you perhaps, I don't know who's running the, maybe I can do it, but somebody could do it for me, pull up the photograph. I'm a dinosaur. I need Louis to do this. We're looking for the picture.
This one?
So if you go back to, yeah, if you go back to the photograph, I'm sorry, this one here. The picture on the right is important, because it shows these other signs that are in the vicinity. And so these signs that you see on the left of the proposed sign are important, because you'll note that they are, they have varying sizes. For example, the V-Dot 3 Turn sign is 10.4 feet tall, 10.4 feet. The town's own historic destination sign is 11.81 feet tall. The V-Dot 229 sign is 11.81 feet tall as well. The McDonald's sign is over 30 feet tall. In fact, it's 30.6 feet tall. Finally, there are two not shown in the photograph, just east of the site, there are two V-Dot signs. One is a 25 mile per hour sign, and another one is a yield sign. Those both are 11.2 feet, and that's just effectively right next to where the photographer's taking that picture. So you have other signs in the area. You also have certain prior cases that may help you understand, help you follow or recognize the analysis. There was the hospital case, perhaps before some of your times, some of the commissioner's time here, but that hospital case that was approved some years ago, a few years ago, approved 90 signs, repeat, 90 signs. The case that came before this commission in March for Wellspring at the former Poncha Villa site, at the intersection of 29 Business and 29 Bypass, was approved for a 20-foot pole-mounted sign, again, 20-foot pole-mounted sign. I had the opportunity, I'll just tell you a little history, 50 years ago, as a young buck, I would, we would drive, cruise, the loop, we called it, that's Main Street, north and south. Now 29, and back then, 29 wasn't around, but 29 Bypass wasn't around, but 29 and Main Street, 2915 today was where one would go. We would go down to McDonald's occasionally, go to Baby Gems, and go to Pizza Hut. There was no shopping center of note around, certainly no internet, no cell phones, so that was the entertainment as a young buck. And so I had the occasion the other night at 11 o'clock on a Friday, and I can assure you that's way past my bedtime. I'm doing the loop, and I'm interested at that time just to see how many signs are out there. And there are many signs, of course, on facades of buildings, of storefronts in the shopping centers, and I'm not making any reference to those. This is strictly signs that are either monument signs or pole-mounted signs in the vicinity of the Main Street, both on the north and south side of town, and I found it really interesting. And this is an unofficial count, but I would tell you, I saw 78 of them.
That's a lot.
78. So you think, okay, well, here's another one. Well, this one, I would suggest, is reasonable. It also allows a net gain of no additional signs, because the applicant's going to take down one of their signs. The banner sign that Louis talked about is a vested sign. There's no obligation of the applicant to take it down. They're happy to do so if and when the town allows this new sign to come in. So there's a net gain of no additional signs to the town. So in summary, I'd like to describe what others have talked, have mentioned about this sign. Staff has mentioned, called it modest. Dr. Burchard at the work session called it attractive. Staff has also called it reasonable. I call it justifiable, and so I would ask you to agree with that position and also note that the applicant's been very reasonable, as has staff. We thank Mr. Hopewell and Louis for their courtesies. It's been a pleasure dealing with them. They have worked hard to present good conditions. They are acceptable to the applicant, and that protects, I think, the town as does staff, and also the applicant has been cooperative to remove their sign. So based on those reasons, the applicant respectfully requests your unanimous vote to recommend approval to town council, and as always, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you, and I'm glad to answer any questions, if any.
There's a lot of talk about why this sign is appropriate, but there's no talk about why a monument ground-mounted sign is not appropriate.
I'm sorry, why a ground-mounted sign?
Is not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I understand the point.
Why have we not, are we not considering a nonconforming ground-mounted sign?
Mr. Hopewell can maybe shed some light on that. I believe this is considered a monument sign, which is what the code calls for.
I believe the chairman is inquiring more in terms of potentially filling in that base portion.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
You know, that's a matter of aesthetic preferences, and I believe the applicant has made this determination. I'll defer to them.
Yes, glad to answer that, Mr. Chairman. I now understand what you're driving, why is there a vacant space beneath the sign as shown. And the reason for that is, of course, as I mentioned, the fence is, on the average, six feet tall, the chain link fence is six feet tall, and in some cases, 6.25 feet. The face is five feet. The blue area you see is five feet. So the idea was to get the visual, the visibility of the sign above the fence itself. Certainly, that applicant could go ahead and put in a, could include cover all the way down below the word "hospital," all the way down to the ground, but it really serves no purpose. It would make the face much larger, may actually exceed the 180 feet. Of course, even if we exceeded the 180, you could grant a larger sign, but it's really unnecessary, because the fence is there.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yes, sir. Good question.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have a similar point. Just for my, can you, can you see, I can't necessarily see what kind of vehicle that is that's parked in that right-hand picture there?
The right-hand picture, I see the light-colored sign to the right.
Yeah, the vehicle to the, yeah, can you see that?
Behind the fence?
It's a Ford Explorer.
Okay. So then someone driving down 29 would be able to see a sign that's at Animal Hospital through the chain link fence, the same as we can see that's a Ford Explorer right now?
Well, I noticed yesterday, when I went down to measure the fence, there was actually a car behind the fence. There's an ability to park underneath the sign, and there's a little corner that comes out where the sign would be, and so right now, there's a little bit of area for another car.
Okay, that's fair. So it would actually put the sign above a parking space?
Well, it's not parked, it's parked space, but I did notice there was a, there was a car parked there yesterday when I went out to measure the heights of the fence.
All right, okay. So a car would block a sign that was lower than the sign that's in this?
I think that's possible. Maybe Mr. Farnwell could answer that better than I can, but I would think that a larger vehicle could perhaps obscure part of the sign. The whole idea is to make the sign.
Okay.
Rick, do you have any comment on it?
I'm looking to see the orientation of it. In that area where that is, in the area where that car is parked, it looks like it is in this space right here, and as the road comes down, I think it's certainly possible for a vehicle to block the sign if it was down at the ground mount. And also, if they were parking there at the end of the travelway, that could also happen. And I've been to Dr. Burchard's office, and pardon, it's been, sometimes you need to park where you can and get in, so I think that's a good, this is a good solution. Also, when you're driving down the road, depending on your angle, the photograph being stopped, you don't have the effect of motion and the fence grates that, as you're moving past there, the fence is more of an obscuring feature than it would be standing still.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Can I also make another comment that I failed to make before? This may help you a little bit. The question is, how much of that sign is illuminated? And I asked that question of the sign manufacturer. What's interesting is that the blue face, the entire face is not illuminated, which is a little bit unusual. Most of the time, you'd see the whole thing. In this case, this is what's called a push-through sign, a push-through cabinet, and I didn't know what that was until I inquired, but that effectively, so the LED lights are inside, what is illuminated are only the letters you see there, as well as the icon to the top left-hand corner.
Question. So the chain link fence is there to contain dogs and cats?
Yes, sir.
How do you contain a cat in a fence?
Well, that's a good question. That one I can't.
Unless you have a top on the fence, it's not going to contain a cat.
I will tell you that Dr. Burchard, I think, attempted to, may have addressed that at the work session, where he said, you know, can you imagine? And I don't know if you put, I'm not a cat lover, I don't have a cat, but I don't know if cats are leashed. Maybe occasions where they aren't. The dogs are, by law, supposed to be.
I can understand you having that area for dogs. You're going to have to have a different area for cats that will not contain a cat.
It's not meant for cats. It's meant for, you know, dogs.
Yeah, of course, of course. But that's not what he said. He said dogs and cats.
I stand corrected, and I appreciate your distinction.
Thank you.
By your vote, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, can I ask another question? So there are three, between the two lots, there are three buildings. Just so we're clear, can you tell us what is in each of those three buildings?
So if you look at number 11 and 12, you'll see, basically, Lot 11, you'll see, highlighted in blue, the two buildings in front on Sycamore are homes that are residential units now. Down the road, perhaps, could be commercial, there's own commercial.
But they are currently residential?
They are. They're occupied by tenants of Dr. Burchard, and you'll see in the bottom half or the south side of 11, that is where the clinic itself, Amberwood Hospital.
Got it, got it. Okay, so my question, I guess, is, so we're talking about, I mean, and I understand the sort of the history of the nonconformance, that, right, that a sign that is advertising a business that's on Lot 11 is physically located on Lot 12. I'm thinking, let's not, I mean, we certainly know what the situation is now, or the situation has been in the past. Let's go forward 20 years. The animal, let's say maybe the best use of this property is not Animal Hospital anymore. We're going to end up with a sign in someone's residential backyard that points to a use that may or may not exist. And my question is, can we condition that the sign has to be for this Animal Hospital, or is that not an approvable condition?
Why would we care whether it's for the Animal Hospital or something else?
Well, because, let's just say that Lot 12 goes into residential use. It's already, the front of it's already housed. Let's say it just becomes... Let's say it just becomes permanently housed, and now I, now if I have a non-conforming, conforming sign, I can do an advertisement for anything I want there.
If I may address, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I would direct you to condition four, proposed by staff, pardon me, condition three, the sign is located on the parcel subject to this condition, Mr. Chairman, that may only advertise business activity conducted on parcel forty-one B nine eleven or parcel forty-one B nine twelve. Frankly, I would submit that to try to restrict further than that is pretty severe, because we don't know what the uses would be. There's own for C three. There was a question at work session, and it was a good question, which is, what do you do? If we can go back to the picture, to the plat, right there. So if you were, if you were to say, okay, well, and that's actually a better illustration for you all. You can see better here, it's closer, zoomed in a little bit. So you see the Animal Hospital called a stone and framed building, and then you see the residential unit in front of that, in both of that, as well as a residential unit. You'll see the parking. That is what was depicted on the site plan in nineteen eighty, forty-four years ago, which was approved. I would, frankly, this is debatable, but I would, might disagree with staff whether that's a non-conforming use, because I believe that that site is one site. There are two lots, granted, but yet it was approved as one site and is operating as one site. Staff is effectively set in work session, it's effectively operating as one site. If there were a conveyance by Dr. Bouchard of lot twelve, for example, let's say he wanted to retire, he should have the ability to convey lot twelve, but I can assure you, if I'm involved or anybody else knows what they're doing, it would certainly make the conveyance of lot twelve subject to a reservation of parking on that lot for Amberwood. So effectively, those areas are going to go with the use of eleven, regardless of what happens to, even if there were not a conveyance, let's say there was a lease of the residential unit, and somebody wanted to start using that area, they would be limited to the current age in the building itself. So I think from a legal point of view, it's really a non-issue.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If I can raise one other point that may be relevant for consideration, particularly as it relates to the height of the sign. There's another non-conforming factor here, and that's that metal chain link fence. Current code would require that that fence be covered in either a green or a black vinyl, which again would, if they were to update that fence to meet current requirements, would further obscure a sign that might be situated behind it. So something else just for the commission to consider.
That hasn't happened, I expect, speculating, because my grandfather's been there somewhere. There was a good question in work session about moving the sign, and why don't, why don't we, why don't the applicant move the sign? I think Dr. Bouchard was pretty adamant that it would be an unnecessary expense, and there, I think, if I correct Dr., that everybody's happy with the sign as it's functioning now. The fence, excuse me, the fence is functioning well. So thank you, Mr. Hopewell. Anything else?
Any other questions? Would anyone else like to come forward and speak at the public hearing?
I actually have one more question. Was there any consideration given to any kind of directional on the animal, I mean, on the sign itself? I'm still, if I'm driving down twenty-nine and need an Animal Hospital, I'm not familiar with the property. How, how do I know where to go?
If you, perhaps, if you go back to the sign, showing the directional sign, right here. So this is a sign, you can see how old it is. And the other sign, the old V sign, I expect, was about the same era, and that was destroyed. It was a wooden sign destroyed by a pretty severe storm. So the only directional to your question is on that sign on the right, pointing, Animal Hospital, pointing to the entrance, which is pretty minimal. There is no directional on the proposed sign, and frankly, that is the text that the applicant saw. I don't know that you could either, really, on that sign.
Right, because where would you put them? Right, yeah.
I think the concern would also be, in terms of the clutter, the visual impact of trying to convey more information has more of a distracting effect from drivers off the road. That could be a concern as well.
I guess a simple answer I would give, not speaking for the doctors, although I guess I am speaking for the doctors, is that, subject to his comment, but the identity, the location is identified by this sign as proposed. And so if somebody, frankly, the idea is to pronounce that there is, announce that there is an Animal Hospital in the vicinity. How you get there may take a little work, but I think somebody would have to slow down and take a right and right, and left and left, and try to figure that out. Or maybe get the name Amberwood. If you're going, I don't know if you can see the word Amberwood, you Google that on your phone as you get off the road, park, but.
Go to McDonald's, have a hamburger while you're looking.
Actually, the McDonald's is right next door. I mean, you could sit at McDonald's and see, see what's going on next door. All good questions, thank you.
No, thank you. One more question, which you may or may not know the answer to. McDonald's owns the parcel right in front of the lot eleven.
Yes.
Did Dr. Bouchard own that before McDonald's purchased it?
It's my understanding, if you see LR, that's showing land records, that's a reference to the D book. I haven't pulled that document, but my understanding was that was part of the, in fact, I have looked at the surveys, so lot eleven, you know, were nineteen sixty-era lots, and so I believe that McDonald's wanted to acquire that little portion, excuse me, pointing to McDonald's, as the chairman is asking. It's my understanding that that was acquired at the request of McDonald's so they could have visibility coming from, headed from east to west.
Wasn't your applicant also, didn't he lose some land off of lot twelve?
He mentioned there was a condemnation or V dot, or, may have been by agreement, meaning it wouldn't have been condemned, but yes, there was an expansion of James Madison Highway that he agreed to.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't know how much footage he lost, I guess, that's behind the sidewalk?
That's my understanding.
The sidewalk probably was his property at some point.
Honestly, that I don't know.
Possibly.
Possibly, yes. He did reference that there was an acquisition at the work session.
Thank you.
It's a very limited site. I mean, nineteen, the gentleman was there in nineteen eighty, and he's trying to upgrade his business, and he's, he started, when I started practicing law, we both have gray hair now, so the good doctor, Dr. Smith, will at some point perhaps be taking this on. So this idea is to protect the future of viability of this facility.
I appreciate all your arguments about, you know, future development and shared parking and, you know, all the elements you've taken into account that's, you know, saying, you know, this is what makes a survivable site, and to do something different doesn't make sense.
Yes, sir.
And I just have one more question, maybe for the engineer. So, and we talked about this a little bit in the work session, based on the fact that a previous sign was destroyed. The way that this is oriented, basically, west, northwest, this is not going to be designed to catch wind?
Well, it will, any sort of fake facade would catch wind, but the structure is designed to resist the wind forces.
Okay. So we're not worried about this ending up in the middle of the highway?
I don't think so. Could, Louis, could you give us the depiction on the G P of the construction of the sign itself? I would point, there's another one.
Well, that's, that's a pretty good one right there. You can see the bait.
Well, I think there's another one.
All right.
I think it's on page one. Oh, I'm wrong, it is right. If you look at the, there's a reference on the G P, those posts, so that's what's visible above ground, but there's, I think, a four-foot post, it's going down, you can kind of, on those two sidelines.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah.
That looks pretty substantial, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's on there here.
Yeah. That's not part of this.
That's on the last page.
So you can see that there's a reference to those, this is anything that comes.
Great, okay. I mean, yeah. I think it's just important to note that we're talking about, you know, a sign that's above fence level, that is, you know, oriented in such a way, but that we recognize that when we're talking about health, safety, welfare concerns, that, you know, the one, obvious one, would be that this, you know, something ends up in the middle of the highway because it's not blocked. I mean, you know, it's got a good head start. So, anyway, all right, thank you.
Well, that goes away.
I'm more worried about the cats.
I know. Yeah, right, exactly.
And this is where they are benefiting from having the smaller surface area than they could. I mean, again, they could have that hundred and eighty at the lower height that would form a larger catchment area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public hearing? So the public hearing is closed. Any discussion?
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we forward this to the Town Council for our recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
If I may just ask for a clarification, is that with the conditions as recommended by staff?
I'm sorry, yes.
Second. Any discussion?
I just scanned through the conditions for issuance of a conditional use permit. Use shall not adversely affect public health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. Use will not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the neighborhood. Use will be in harmony with the goals, policies, and future land use mapped on the comprehensive plan, and I don't see a conflict with any of those conditions. Therefore, the issuance, I don't see any obstacle to the issuance of the permit for what it's worth.
Agree.
Are you saying you agree with the motion?
I already seconded it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think the only thing that's missing is what the old sign looked like. I know with the other two CUPs that we approved previously, the hospital signs were existing, they were re-illuminated, slightly moved a little bit, and the one for Wellspring, the sign was, fell in the same conditions as this one, you know, inactive after, for more than two years.
I don't look at what we did in other areas, I look at this area and how it should look in this area. Just because we did it somewhere else doesn't mean we can do it here, too.
Exactly.
And by the way, I drove down there several times, and that sign would fit right in. Everything else down there is so gigantic all around it. It looks like it'd fit right in pretty well.
I agree, it's tastefully done, it doesn't, it doesn't scream.
Yep.
And it's tastefully done. Any other discussions?
I just thank the applicant for their patience with us and answering all of our questions.
I just want to say, I, the reason I went through all this is that, in my opinion, it's useful to us to be a little more disciplined than we've been in the past, and I'm a major offender here about documenting our finding and the reason for this, the basis for a recommendation, in part to protect any appearance that we might be arbitrarily, making decisions So if somebody comes along again and says, ah, you have precedent in this neighborhood, you've granted this permit, the basis for our recommending the issuance of the permit should be crystal clear. Hence my reference to the code.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
That's good.
All right, we've come to that time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, seeing this in our last session, going over it, helped me a lot in making the decision, even, so I could drive by and see what's going on. And having this stuff at work sessions is great, I think.
I don't think this body has ever come up on any decisions capriciously or arbitrarily. We tend to uncover every rock and some rocks twice.
You're right.
All right, so is there any, before we move to the work session, is there any other business?
No other business.
Okay, we'll move to the work session for the family subdivision. We reconvene the regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen dot two dash twenty-two fifty-three, we wish to initiate an amendment to the town subdivision ordinance to establish standards related to family subdivisions, and it also, and that we would direct staff to advertise a public hearing to be held on August twenty, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it currently jumped to other business earlier, so.
Still no other business.
Still no other business. Follow-up items?
Follow-up items, there were several actions taken by Town Council that impact or relate to the Planning Commission and their actions at their private, prior meeting. The twenty-two thirty-two conformity reviews, the Town Council did uphold the conformity review as it related to Culpeper Technology Campus. They did overturn the conformity review as it pertained to the Copper Ridge Electric Substation. So both of those were ultimately found to conform to the comprehensive plan. The other item is the council, Commission's action in upholding the zoning administrator's interpretation of the subdivision ordinance. Council voted to overturn that, and so essentially overturned the zoning administrator's interpretation of the subdivision ordinance as it pertained to the family subdivision. So that was what prompted the initiation of the code amendment that was made prior to this.
There's a point of interest on that. Overturning our decision on whether it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan, I don't see where the Town Council should do that. They can say, okay, so it's not in conformance, we're going to vote for it anyway. I mean, they can, they could do the same thing, but not say that it's in viola, not in violation of the, of the plan, because we're, we're the plan.
In order for those facilities to be constructed, they do need to be found in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and per state code, it does give the ability for the applicant to appeal or for council independently to overturn the Planning Commission's determination and find it to conform.
I didn't understand that. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments on that process. Is this the appropriate time to make them, or should I wait till we get to the commission members' discussion?
To the chair, but from my perspective, it would be perfectly appropriate to do it now.
Why don't we cover it now, then?
So I don't know who was present at the meeting, but I've watched the footage of it, and what struck me about that process was, first, the skill of the applicant's lawyer, the gentleman made his case succinctly, respectfully, concisely, but it was, that was more, I think, it's fair to say that was substantially the only point of view that was provided to the council. And I could hear in the council's questions, sort of a thirst for more information, and why did the commission do this? And to me, well, is there a mechanism, apart from the fact that one of our members is also a council member, is there a formal mechanism by which, and also the findings attached to the commission's decision, is there a formal mechanism by which commission, insight that the council can obtain insight into the commission's rationale for making a decision of that nature? Or are those the two mechanisms?
Those are really the two primary mechanisms. That's not to say that there couldn't potentially be a presentation by the chair of the Planning Commission if there's a desire to present that. This did arise a couple of years back, related to the Architectural Review Board, where they requested in instances where their determinations were, or their decisions with their certificate of findings were being appealed, the opportunity to have a member of the A R B actually present their case. So in instances going forward, we certainly can look to invite a member of the Planning Commission, in addition to the council representative, to present if there's, if there's a desire to do so.
This is my eighth year sitting on the commission, and this, the data center centers have been far and away the largest, the biggest issue, the most substantial in terms of land footage, in terms of implied finances. But it strikes me that, that we have not done our job well if we are failing to equip the. the council with the information they need to when they hear a lawyer making the applicant's case, that they need to have in order to balance that representation against the decision made by this council, by this commission. This commission spent a lot of time last year on this issue, and spent as much time as we were able to this year on the issue. And what I heard, again, listening to the comments, the questions of the council members who spoke was, we don't really know. I mean, our own representative on the council, Ms. Schmidt, when asked, and I'm going to paraphrase you, I hope I get this, I get this approximately right, said that there are two, there are two stations, I don't see the difference in that, I'm in a quandary because of it. She was present, or, you know, Ms. Schmidt was present at all our deliberation, and if she leaves the meeting without understanding the basis of the decision, we've just done something wrong, we failed to communicate even with each other. Moreover, we failed to document that, assuming we had communicated effectively within this body, we failed to document that in a way that would support Ms. Schmidt in the council meeting, saying, look at the findings and I'll elucidate them for you. She didn't, she didn't have the clarity of explanation, apparently, nor did she have the documentation that would have supported her in representing a viewpoint that wasn't her own viewpoint. So my, I feel that, that that's too bad, that's a shame that we didn't, that we didn't do a better job than that, but that shame would be redoubled if we don't draw a lesson from that and be more disciplined about making explicit why we're making certain decisions and writing that explanation down, not just informally in the notes, but in formal findings. Maybe not for every case, I don't want to tie us up in red tape, but for important issues, I think, I personally will try to be more attentive to that. And that's, that was one thing I wanted to say. Happy to listen to response.
Can I just add to that a little bit? And I'm, a lot of this, I'm just talking on my behalf, but I know we were given, and I think we, Andrew asked for this, is the reasons why you had overturned, because both bodies, whether it was the town council or the planning commission, we've all been through this for months and months. So those two data center sites were both approved by both parties, by planning commission, by town council. No?
The second one wasn't, you weren't here.
The second one was never. The planning commission had no recommendation from the planning commission, it came with a split vote.
And that's what was confusing last minute, last meeting, and that's why my confusion was, is I didn't know if you guys had the same information that we had had.
By the way.
So we saw it as, as two data center sites, both requiring substations. So, and again, I'm speaking, you know, for myself right now, but, and I'm losing my voice in the meantime. But it's, if you had two data center sites, both requiring substations, and the plans for how those, the lines would come in to feed those two substations, I couldn't, the quandary was, why is one approved and the other not when you've got the same purpose for both of them? So I think that was the.
And I put you on the spot a little bit.
Well, that's okay.
What I'm trying to say is not that you did anything improper, it's that we let you down as a body by not clearly explaining it. We even had a little conversation afterwards, and I obviously didn't, I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't clear enough to help you.
And I didn't speak up, because I didn't, right. I didn't know what information you guys had had before versus the information that we were given, and how we came to the conclusion to approve both.
So my argument would be that our process needs to be strengthened.
No, it doesn't, and I'll tell you why.
Very good.
Everybody on here can go to the town council meeting and make their, their likes and dislikes known. You could have gone, I could have gone to the town council meeting, we don't have to be represented on town council representative to convey our ideas. If you feel you can convey it, go there.
Well, actually, with all due respect, John, I, I think it's better when this body speaks with one voice.
That's true, that's true, but I do remember one meeting that our chairman of this body went, went to the town council and made his views, which was in total disagreement with the vote on, as a matter of fact, it was you went to the town council, on implementing the new requirements for all the subdivisions coming in. Anyway.
Man, I'll have to go back.
You went to the town council and you convinced them that you were right, and I don't have a problem.
Probably the time when I figured out that the planning commission should speak with one voice.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yours was the voice at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
So I could use some clarification here, and perhaps the director can help us out. If a member of the commission attends such a meeting, is that member allowed the two minutes of public comment to, to express their point of view or represent the commission's point of view? Or are they allowed, do they get, do they have a different standing as, say, the representative of the appeal?
It'd be a personal view.
I'm asking.
Okay.
Just like the answer to so many things, I think it depends. I think if, if you're speaking as a citizen, then you would have the three minutes that are afforded to other citizens. If the commission wished for you to speak as a representative of the commission, I think council would afford you a greater opportunity to speak and to help to present.
But to that, this body should designate someone, right? If that's the intention of this body, to have someone come and represent this body, then we should do that in a meeting beforehand. I, I don't want, right, the idea that somebody's going to come talk for the planning commission when no one else at this table had any idea that was going to happen.
Well, I may be the victim of too much imagination, but I imagine that the structure of the, of the system of bodies and committees and councils, such that there, most bodies have a council member on it, the structural advantage of that is that that council member is in a position not just to speak for two minutes, not just to say something, but to be part of the deliberation, the back and forth, give and take deliberative process. And it's, and it's a brilliant system, I think. If we, if it's used well, and I've learned a difficult lesson in this process, and it seems to me that we can do better, and as I say, the shame of, of not doing better the last time will be redoubled if we don't do better the next time.
I think council made the right decision.
That's fine with me, John, I have no issue with you thinking that.
I voted the other way.
It's not, that's not, that's.
No, I, I'm only teasing.
I, I do want to just confirm, though, you did see the memo of the written reasons that was provided to council from the planning commission?
It's, it's, it's a long list.
This is, this is what was provided to, to council in terms of the, the findings for Copper Ridge.
It was presented, you presented it to us.
No, I know, but, but we didn't have at that time the full matrix incorporated, I mean, I, I had, but I just wanted to make sure, because.
Well, I, I, I don't want to be in any way in an antagonistic relation with the department, but the idea that we had, that there was a 60-day clock on this action, and that it came to us only a couple of weeks before the end, or a couple of days before the end of that 60-day clock, right?
It had come the month before.
Yeah.
It came to planning commission twice, and planning commission declined to act at the first meeting.
And we weren't informed that there was, that there was a 60.
Yes, we were, yes, we were.
It was, it was brought up. I didn't recall at the last meeting, but we did check, and it was, it was mentioned.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, we had, we had a very extensive conversation on the first time it was presented, of whether the clock, about the clock, whether the clock needed to exist at all, whether, I mean, the whole, that whole clock process was.
Oh, that's right, at the first meeting, we, because we, we thought that actually the deadline had already passed.
Yeah, that's right.
And we knew the second meeting, we had to make a decision.
No, I thought, I came into the second meeting thinking that the decision already, that the deadline had passed, actually, because James read out the regulation, and I said, well, this is, I came into the meeting, was completely blindsided. Again, my fault, I should have called the, the department sooner, because I know you did run that by the attorney.
Potentially, we'll never, we'll never actually see how it played, would have played out in court, but I'd probably still stand by the fact that we were probably passed due. Yeah.
Okay.
A process that relies on one person over a weekend pulling together some documents in order to develop a set of findings is a weak process. And again, I blame myself, and I'm responsible for, partly responsible for the, for any sort of impediment in the department's process of developing that, that finding sheet. But I think, I think the commission as a body can set the bar a little bit higher. And I, did you have anything else? I don't mean to be defensive, I really just want to say, John, you've been my mentor on the, on the commission here. I wanted to make a second point in this regard, too, and that is that we have not been able, we as a body have not been able to take a broad view of the comprehensive, to reassess the comprehensive plan from a broad perspective according to the regular schedule. Now, the last, what was the date of the last update? It was the 2018?
18.
Okay. So we're only a little beyond that, and you've been very meticulous, the department has very, been very meticulous, that we're not in breach of the letter of the law there. But we haven't been able to take the kind of broad look that would allow us to assess, that would have allowed us to assess before the fact the significance of data centers. For example, data centers are a different kind of industrial development, I think, in my opinion. They're not a traditional industrial development. The town has not had the opportunity to reassess the zoning, the restrictions, the associated apparatus, based on new information. And a key reason has been that we haven't been able to revise, we haven't been able to review the comprehensive plan, we or a steering committee, working together with the department. And an issue there, a related issue there, what the, is, is the, I don't know how to say this, but the understaffing of the department. We had talked about, when we, when we first began to consider the review of the, of the comprehensive plan, it was the winter of, I think, 2022, and the idea was the zoning statute had been slowed down because of the pandemic, but we were going to focus on that, and as soon as the zoning statute was sorted, we would move on to the comprehensive plan. And we were aiming for, to do that towards the end of 2022. So it's been, 2022, 2023, yeah, it's been a, you know, more, going on two years now, a year and a half going on two years. And I know that's not anybody's particular fault, my question is, what can we, can we as a body do anything to support the department in getting the resources it needs so that we can move ahead with that really important step?
I mean, the big thing is, honestly, council has taken the big step, they have funded an additional position, we have it advertised currently for an additional planner to come in. Applications for that have been somewhat slow, but we're, we're hoping to find the right person in the not-too-distant future, which will free up then, particularly my time, to be able to focus on these larger issues that I haven't been able to give as much time to as I'd like, as I'm currently managing a number of the other cases as well. So, again, it's very much on the radar, and that was a topic the council brought up at the meeting on Tuesday night, was a desire to see, see these things move forward at a quicker pace.
Yeah, there's a question that's being asked in another context, which is, I think, fair to ask here, you know, is it a condition, or is it, is it an episode, or is it a condition? And it's been a condition for the last year and a half, but you're saying now this resolution will make it, we'll be able to move beyond that condition, it will have been an episode in hindsight. You think you have the, and again, I'm not saying this, I'm the bad guy today, I'm not saying this to fault you, I'm saying what can we do to, it's a legitimate problem, there was the epidemic, people are moving for family reasons and so on, great opportunities, and you can't, you're not master of the universe, you can't control all of that, but what can we put our weight, the weight of this, you know, this body behind you in a new way to support you in that effort? You're saying it's done, you, you've made a big step forward now. In fact, it was at the July 9th meeting, right, when the position was approved?
The position was approved at the April, May, when they approved the budget. We've advertised and said we're looking to fill it. The, the key things are being able to provide the feedback and input when we do have the work sessions on the, on the code update, becoming prepared for those ones, having, having the ideas, having the input, having those conversations with the community yourselves, again, and helping to get the word out. Ms. Frog, who's here in the audience, has done a great job of helping us to get the word out about the zoning update and that which is available online currently, so that we can receive community feedback and make sure that when we do get this through, it's looking to truly address the concerns of the community and make sure that it is representative of their vision. And so you as representatives of the community, again, having those conversations independently as well, and helping to serve as, to some extent, advocate, but more also just an informant to the community of the changes that are being proposed, is going to be a key step. As I've said all along, when we get to the stage of finally getting to public hearings for this, I'm fine if people get up saying that they have concerns about it, I have, my concern is going to be when they get up and say, I didn't know this was going on. So, that's, that's my request, and that's, that's the biggest help, really, is just helping to get the word out, helping to get that input and feedback on it, so that we can make sure that we address things as much as possible in the process, so that we, when we get to public hearing, folks are generally supportive and behind what's being proposed.
Well, my feeling is that with respect to the data centers, what I'm hearing from people in the community now is, I didn't know this was happening, and laid the blame at my door, I should have gone around to the community and been more active in my outreach. But for, you know, there are, there are signs all up and down, I don't know what it's like on the east side of town, but on the west side of town, with respect to the, the data center. And when I talk to folks who are associated with those signs, what I hear is, we didn't know this was, what was involved, we didn't know.
I think everybody on the east side of town came to the meeting, at least a bunch of them that I knew.
Yeah, okay.
I'm on different committees in town, and I know some of those people who spoke and said they did not know about those meetings, were in other committees. When I gave an update, and I would always give an update, two months in a row about data centers, and then when they came to the meeting, so we didn't know anything about data centers, I called them both out, not publicly, and said, look, and then we had, what, five meetings?
Something like that.
So, and then people said, I don't read the paper, you know, I don't do Facebook, so what Andrew just said about us talking about, to people about things that are happening in town, I think that's important.
I think, in my opinion, part of the issue with the data centers is you can know about data centers without knowing about data centers. I mean, you can hear the words data center.
Oh, no, we talked about.
But it's a very complex, it's, it's, it seems to me as a non-expert, I mean, you're in the field to some extent, and I'm, I'm not, but it's rather complex, and every time I think I've made some progress, I just see how much more, I don't really know about the installations. I realize how much I don't know.
And the technology for data centers is ever-changing as well. So, what do you do to keep up?
Thank you. Thanks for hearing me out, Andrew, and my colleagues on the.
Planning director updates?
Nothing, I look forward to sharing time at the state planning conference with those who are attending, and hopefully bringing back some information for those who are not.
Okay, committee member discussion, Mr. Sirianni?
Yeah, actually, in the course of tonight, I just realized that for, I will miss next Thursday's work session, I'm going to get oriented at UVA that day. Sorry. They're going to show me where to write the check.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clements reminds me, I am traveling out of state next week, I also will not be present for the work session next week.
I will.
To do.
Yes.
There will be three of us, so, hey, we will make a lot of decisions.
That's right.
Yeah.
We'll be sure to tell you about it afterwards.
Those who are not here, if you wish to provide written comments, happily take them, happily, happy to share them for the conversation.
When is that agenda available?
It'll probably be Thursday or Friday, that we'll get it out.
Okay, just so they have a time, a chance to.
Okay, can you discuss some, Ms. Schmidt?
No, I'm good, I've got to quit hitting the microphone.
All right, move for adjournment. Thank you all.